So I'll let you know, you know, it does get hot in here when you put 50 or 60 people in. I've cranked the air conditioning down from 76 to 72. And I've opened up our carbon dump off to the side so we can get some of the hot air out of here. But there is the fact that we all are reading 98.6. So it was so much that the air conditioner could do. So it's time to move on to our next presentation. I want to thank John for his presentation. And hopefully he's laid a good groundwork for you of what AI or whatever we really should call it is. And now we'll get a historical perspective on how society has dealt with new technologies and how they've affected communication. And our speaker is Michael Sokolow. Unlike John, who had this type of career direct trajectory, Michael sort of was born into his trajectory in that his father was a prominent member of the broadcast world. His father Sanford worked for CBS News from 1956 to 1988. And he was eventually the executive producer of the CBS News with Walter Cronkite, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, even if you don't know who was helping him behind the scenes. He is a graduate of Columbia University and Georgetown University. He first went into broadcast journalism himself. I don't know how we sort of made this connection, but when OJ died, somehow we had a correspondence. It's a sort of Forrest Gump moment that he was on the assignment desk in Los Angeles for CNN during the OJ trial. So very intimately aware of the life and history of OJ Simpson. He also has done lots of work in broadcast in relation to the Olympics. He was involved in the Barcelona, Atlanta, and Sydney Olympics. And he's also written a book about the 1936 Berlin Olympics called Six Minutes in Berlin, which was about the rowing team, a rowing event at the Olympics. And it's a story about intersection of sports and politics and media and how the Nazis really wanted to make this. They made this a national spectacle, international spectacle, using the power of media. So he's very well versed in the history of media. He went into academia and is a media historian. Interestingly, in everything I looked at, it doesn't actually say when he came to the University of Maine. I'm guessing it early 2000?
2006.
2006, okay. And he is a professor in the Journalism and Communications Department. And I think I first came to know Michael. He would come to our Main Town meetings. He also has served as a judge for National History Day in Maine, which John Taylor is the state coordinator. In conjunction with the University of Maine, we run that program. We just had the state finals at the University of Maine a couple of weeks ago. And as I say, John, Michael has served as a judge at that event. And I have a whole thick folder right over here of articles that Michael has written because I'm always on the lookout for speakers. I have another whole folder, which probably has like 100 names of potential speakers. And then once I find someone, once I lock in on someone like Michael, I take all those articles and put them in a separate folder. So he's quite prolific in commenting on issues of the day as they relate to media in publications you've probably heard of, like the New York Times, for example. So he's very well regarded as someone who's thinking about these issues of the impact of media. So I will now turn it over to him. And the generic title we put in the program was New Media and Democracy, but he has come up with a much fancier title for his presentation. So I turn it over to Michael Sokolow.
Thanks, David. Oh, David, you have my notes. Thanks. Thank you very much for that. First, I'd like to thank David Richards and the Margaret Chase Smith Library for the invitation to speak here today. This library and archives is a fantastic resource for understanding American politics in the mid 20th century, as well as Senator Smith herself. And I'm grateful we in Maine have it. I have friends, humanities scholars, who have come up and used it and found incredible finds here from the 1940s and 50s. And I'm honored to be speaking here. And also I'd like to thank John because he is doing what you don't know is John is flooded with invitations. He runs the Learn With, not doesn't run, you are, what's your title in that? The Learn with AI.
I don't know, helper.
He's one of the coordinators and collaborators on the Learn with AI process. And every professor up in Orano does not know what to do about AI. And so John is doing these seminars, he's speaking, he's built a website, he's educating all of us. And actually, anyway, actually, before I do that, a quick thing about National History Day. If there's any retired scholarship, I want to put a pitch into it. I love doing it. And we have Nicole Rancourt over there, who trained me from the Maine Humanities Council years and years ago to it. I would really recommend it. It's a lot of fun. So that's my pitch for judges to talk to John.
John or Nicole.
John or Nicole, all right. But I want to tell a quick funny story about inviting John to my introductory journalism class last fall. So I had AI on the schedule, but I didn't know anything about AI, which is kind of interesting as in the syllabus. And so I had two, I sort of had two sources. I have a son who's in college, who's actually studying it, who's going to teach me to teach other people. And then I had John, and I had John come to the class. And a very interesting thing happened. And here's a little peek into what's happening on these campuses. The class was silent. I said, okay, here's our UMaine AI expert. What do you want to know about AI? Let's just open it up. And I thought, I know they have questions, but I think they're afraid. So I said, let's go off the record. Let's go totally off the record. Nobody, any question can be asked, but we're not going to discuss what the answers are and what this discussion is.
Typical journalist.
But I mean, I'm violating here. I'm going to, I'm going to say what the first two questions were. Oh, and by the way, hands shot up. Once we went off the record and they knew that what they said, you know, couldn't be incriminating. First question was, can professors find out if we used AI on papers? Sorry, I apologize, but did I violate the off the records? Look at John. Don't ask John the answers. It's off the record, okay? Let's be clear. The second question was, will there be jobs for journalists, you know, after we graduate? And, you know, I do feel funny. I should not have said that because it was off the record. But it gives you some sense of the kind of uncertainty that's going on on these campuses that we don't really have the answers to and that students are afraid to ask the professors. Okay. So thank you, John, for doing that last year. All right, so I'm going to start today with the goal of my talk. Where do I want to be at the end of this talk? Well, if I said one thing that you take out of here today, it's the following. Don't panic about AI, okay? You see, the title of my talk is consistently chaotic, and that's what I'm going to tell you about. That historically, there is no stasis to political communication. There is no status quo. Every few years, maybe a decade, a new medium of communication arrives and alters, transforms, and evolves our conception of political communication. So change is the constant. That's the normal, okay? Every time we get a new medium, we go through a cyclical process. And we should recognize this pattern and we should talk about it because everybody in this room, including an 18-year-old, has lived through a media evolution, right? But too often, we forgot how it works. People in this room remember a world without cable television. Okay? Now you can say better or worse or whatever, but that's what I'm talking about here. So let's get started. Okay. I'm going to start with a video of a pretty standard narrative about AI. And what I'm going to ask you when the video is over is not so much the content, but the framing. What is the mess? What is the takeaway that these journalists want to tell you about AI? You tell a real video, you need to see them online all the time from those that use artificial intelligence. It's getting tougher, isn't it?
It's really tough.
The evolution of AI is making it so hard to tell the difference.
And with the 2024 presidential election, about a year away, more deep fake campaign ads are popping up. Action News Jack's Washington correspondent Samantha Manning walks us through what voters need to know and why there's no oversight of what's being made online.
For nearly three quarters of a century, television campaign ads have been a key tool for candidates.
These are mistakes.
And as technology evolves.
And it is now called the 2024 presidential race.
The political ads are getting more sophisticated, too. This is an example of an AI-generated ad made by the Republican National Committee showing made-up future news coverage in a scenario where President Biden is re-elected next year.
Order agents were overrun by a surge of 30,000 illegals yesterday.
While this ad is labeled by the RNC as AI-generated on YouTube, questions remain about whether voters will always be able to spot the difference.
Hi, I'm Ron DeSantis.
In September, this deep fake video pretending to show Florida Governor Ron DeSantis dropping out of the presidential race went viral before an AI disclaimer was included. Back in March, these fake AI-generated photos of former President Donald Trump went viral. How can someone know if it's real or if it's fake?
For the general user, it is extremely hard right now, very hard.
Temple University Professor Subhan Kumar says the public can look for things like inconsistencies in the video. Maybe it's an extra finger or words spelled wrong. But the signs aren't always so obvious as more and more people become familiar with making these videos. He showed us how simple it is for an average user to use an AI app. This is a test recording. Within about a minute, my real voice was used to create an AI-generated voice recording.
Create new audio and video content.
That sounds like it. Some online platforms like Google have already announced their own disclosure requirements for AI-generated videos. But right now, there are no federal requirements, no national framework for how AI videos should be regulated. Are we sort of in this Wild, Wild West scenario where we don't really have so much oversight or enforcement?
Yes, we are, unfortunately. The policymakers have to come with the clear guidelines of that, that, you know, these are the rules you need to follow.
Ballmakers have held several public hearings over the last year about how Congress can regulate this technology and its potential impact on voters.
Should we be worried about this for our elections? It's one of my areas of greatest concern.
But passing new laws in Congress is often a slow-moving process. While there are several proposals that have been introduced, so far, no laws have been passed about how to regulate AI. It's a challenge that will likely only get harder as we get closer to the election.
By mid next year, we will be in much more advanced age.
Leaving it up to the public for now to navigate the potentially confusing road ahead. For coverage you can count on in Washington, DC, Samantha Manning, Action News Jacks.
Okay, how is it framed? What's the takeaway message here from that clip? Watch out. What else?
Be fearful.
Be fearful, watch out.
Don't trust anything.
Don't trust anything. Can you, do you think, do you think the reporter has embedded assumptions about audiences and voters?
That were gullible?
Okay, gullible, gullible. Of course, it's not the people watching this on TV. They're not gullible because they're learning about the AI. It's all those other people way out there that none of us know. Those voters, they're the ones who are going to be fooled. By the way, there's a communicative theory called the third-person effective communications where we all think everybody's super gullible. Any other embedded kind of things in this overall message, yes?
That they like completely understand the situation and are experts, you know, everything?
Let's turn to the experts. We got one right here. Let's have them write, and not only, that's excellent, and not only that, but let's have them write our laws. Let's have them create a whole new series of laws. There isn't any sort of pushback. The idea is we must have the laws, right? And that's my sense of that news clip. Okay, so let's think about this. There is a presumed ignorance of the audience, okay? There is fear, and the problem that the new media represents for democracy involves not persuasion, but exploitation and manipulation. And there is the need, the demand, I'm curious, is there an assumption or is there a plea? What's the word you would use for political and regulatory intervention here? My sense is the reporter has a bias. The reporter's bias by interviewing the professor and framing it in this way is that the intervention must happen. So when she says Congress is having a problem that needs resolution, there's a very, I think there's an inherent kind of thing, I don't know, an implicit. That's what I saw. Did anybody else get that sense? So that's the bias of the journalist who tells and frames the story in a certain way. So we have to be conscious of the way we're talking about and framing and receiving our information about new media of communication because this exact kind of journalistic reporting would have been published in the 1830s about the penny press, in the 1920s about the radio, in the 1940s about TV, and about the web in around 1998 to 2002. And so let's look at some of those real quick. Okay, so I just ran through a bunch of ways that new media is disruptive and that we sort of cyclically integrate them. The first one is the Western Union and the Telegraph and the dispute election of 1876. For those of you who don't know, the Western Union favored the Republicans. Samuel Hayes against Tilden, Tilden won more votes. And it's a very famous case. This all came out later. The people at the time did not know. But because the Western Union controlled the Associated Press and they controlled the Telegraph, they wanted Hayes to win the election, even though Tilden won more votes and he was going to get the electoral vote from the South. So they gave the Democrats telegrams to the Republican Party. So when they would go in to negotiate, the Republicans had what the Democrats had been telegraphing themselves privately about how to negotiate the settlement of 1876. And that's how you get President Rutherford B. Hayes. He was elected by Western Union. And this is, this is well-known. I mean, this is sort of nondisputable. You can read it in the Tim Wu book or whatever. But it does get to one thing. It's not that the Telegraph elected rep, not this machine elected Rutherford B. Hayes. It's the socio-cultural application of the machine, right? It's the regulatory political, it's the guardrails that John was talking about. They didn't exist in 1876. We didn't have a federal regulatory cushion. So if Western Union wanted a Republican elected, they would work for the Republican to be elected. Okay. Second, McKinley and Newsreels, 1896. Again, Republicans, interestingly. The original newsreel companies were sort of, if you were to really break it down, it was sort of Edison and the Kinetoscope, and it was Republican. It was, it was a Republican basis. They wanted McKinley. So the original, original newsreels, we're going back to the Nickelodeons and before the Nickelodeons, wouldn't put Democrats. They just wouldn't be there. They wouldn't, you know, it would be William McKinley goes shopping for an ice cream cone. Oh, that's great. Even during the presidential election. But it was minimal. The impact was minimal. It wasn't a big deal. And very quickly, film switched when the independents moved out to Hollywood and they started getting immigrant companies and things like that. And they, and they started realizing that going down the middle was better for them. Roosevelt and the Fireside Chat, we're going to talk about in just a sec. Eisenhower Kennedy and the televised presidency, we're going to talk in a minute. Now here's one that's in the recent past. But why aren't, here's an interesting question. Facebook Cambridge Analytica in the 2016 election. Remember that whole thing about Brad Parscale? Donald Trump's mesmerizing magician who could micro-target people and use their data against them? And Cambridge Analytics, you remember this? Does this ring a bell? Isn't it kind of interesting that here we are almost in an election season and nobody's really talking about micro-targeting anymore? Nobody's talking about the servers. Nobody's talking, I'm not talking about the bots and trolls. That's kind of a different thing than what Cambridge Analytica did. Cambridge Analytica promised a level of data analysis and data intervention that had never been tried before. Well, if it truly was this magic that put Donald Trump across in 2016, why don't we talk about it in 2024? And the answer is, we talked, well, we'll talk about it in a second. But AI is simply the latest iteration of this, right? It's not the technology, it's the application and this kind of thing. All right, so there's this cycle of disruption and accommodation. And this is not my idea. I drew up this little graph just based on, but this comes from basically all the theorists. Donald Citrum, Media in the American Mind, Marshall McLuhan. Basically, it's a, it's a basic cycle. You start with the introduction of the new medium when you get these techno-utopian theories, right? Like, wow, the web is going to energize democracy. Everybody's going to get information. Everybody will vote online. It's going to be this whole new world that's fantastic. This is a book that kind of represents that. 1995, Lawrence Grossman was the head of PBS, head of NBC, and the Ford Foundation paid him to come up with a report called The Electronic Republic: Reshaping Democracy in the Information Age. And it's filled with these kind of utopian ideas about, think of what participation rates will be when you can just press a button on your computer at home. We can get 100% of the Americans voting. Wouldn't that be amazing? Okay, then you get the backlash, right? Which is when we see what actually happens. And Brittany Kaiser worked for Cambridge Analytica. She wrote this book called Targeted: The Cambridge Analytica Whistleblowers, Inside Story of How Big Data Trump and Facebook Broke Democracy and How It Can Happen Again. Although it's kind of interesting for a title. If democracy is broken, how do you break it a second time? Break it smaller, break it whatever. But you get kind of, when you see what actually happens with the media as this dystopian outcome, you get a moral panic or a backlash. And the backlash can be done in several different ways. So we're currently in a backlash against TikTok based on a whole bunch of different things. Based on the relationship with China, but also based on our uneasiness with the social media apps, which were once, Facebook was once going to be liberatory. Now Facebook is filled with trolls and bots and it's algorithmically doing something to us. And so we're, we're moving in a direction of the moral panic and the backlash in that way. And then eventually we get to accommodation, which is when we habituate it, we learn to be skeptical and cynical about, not cynical, that's me. We learn to be skeptical and somewhat educated about these things. And, and that's how it works. And eventually we learn that to approach the media in appropriately skeptical manner and we come habituated to it and we accommodate it as part of our daily mix of information gathering. And then we move on. And then you know what happens? We get another new media. But here's the thing. You're all, by being here today and listening to John and me, you're, you're, you're part of this cycle. You're going to go home, hopefully, and talk to people about AI. Talk to the things you, about what you've learned today, about whether it really is a threat, whether it's not a threat, whether it's different, whether it's new, and those kinds of things. And that will diffuse, that will diffuse the fear of AI. That will diffuse what is actually happening. I'm hoping, I'm hoping. If the opposite, if you take the opposite message, perfectly fine with that. Watch out. But even if you tell somebody panic, like that journalist did. Remember, one of John's solutions at the end was journalism. So all the people who watched that three-minute clip, if you take the panic, which is the opposite of what I'm saying out of it, that's helpful, too. That's media literacy, right? So that's part of this, that's part of the solution you proposed. So in a sense, that's, that's where we are and how the cycle works. Okay. One thing I'm not going to talk about today, I'm just going to do this really quick, is the idea, if in the Q and A, if somebody wants to ask about this or we want to talk about this, that's fine. But you can sell a lot of books in America on whether there's an inherent political bias in the technology itself, okay? People love to read this and people love to write this. So for instance, this is a good book by Jeff Schur. The Soundbite Society: How Television Helps the Right and Hurts the Left, okay? Or Talk Radio's America: How an Industry Took Over a Party That Took Over the United States. Talk radio? Talk radio, there's 330 million Americans. And, well, actually, take that back. I study radio and radio is still the number one media. But talk radio didn't take over the United States. I mean, just as a simple, basic thing here. Oh, and by the way, and it's linked to the idea that Ronald Reagan was on TV and filmed the first celebrity president, and then we got the guy from the reality show The Apprentice. We were kind of seduced into thinking about media in this way. And the funny thing about, about the talk radio idea is you do realize that Donald Trump has run for president twice and both times he got less votes than his opponent, right? So if talk radio was taking over America, how did Hillary Clinton earn more votes than him? How did Joe Biden earn more votes than him? How did Barack Obama earn more votes? There's only been one Republican who's earned more votes in a presidential election than a Democrat in this century. And it was 2004, it was George W. Bush. Every, Al Gore won more votes than George W. Bush in 2000, Bill Clinton. Now, if our media that we use every day was constantly favoring one party over another, that pattern probably wouldn't hold. So let me, all right. So let's look at the case study here. Couple case studies. The first one is the most famous one, The Incredible Magician, The Fireside Chat. But the part that's been written out of the history is, did Roosevelt use radio almost like an incipient radio dictator? And I know that sounds crazy. And part of the reason is the people who write the history have chalked up Roosevelt's opposition to extreme right-wingers like the Liberty League, Charles Coughlin, the Radio Priest, John T. Flynn, a famous conservative commentator, whatever. But what's been left out of that history, oh, and by the way, I want to say something about Roosevelt and Roosevelt's radio use. The guy was absolutely fantastic. We've never had a president match a medium, not even Trump and Twitter, match a medium like Roosevelt's and radio. Unbelievable. Nobody was like him. And I'm going to play a clip in just a sec to show you what I mean. But, and actually, I will play the clip now. I'm going to play a very brief clip from a fireside chat. And I want you to pretend you don't speak English. I don't want you to pay any attention to the message. Words do not matter. I want you to only listen to what Roosevelt's voice is doing, okay?
... that report.
Sorry, he gets better about 12 minutes in.
So because of the shortness of time, I must defer a number of subjects to a later date. Recently, the most notable public questions that have concerned us all have had to do with industry and labor. And with respect to these, certain developments have taken place that I consider of great importance. I am happy to report that after years of uncertainty culminating in the collapse of the spring of 1933, we are bringing order out of the old chaos with a greater certainty of the employment of labor at a reasonable wage and of more business than if they are promised. These governmental and industrial developments hold promise of new achievement.
Oops, sorry.
So because of the shortness of time.
Okay, let me pause there. What do you hear? Yes?
Negotiations. He is using a voice that he is negotiating with his voters.
Okay, so it's kind of an interlocutor. He's, he's taking into account that somebody's out there listening and he's shaping. Good. Other thoughts, other?
He sounds calm.
Very calm, good, good. Other, other thoughts? Optimism, yes, you're going to get paid. But that's, but the, did you, I was going to say, it is an optimistic message. I'm glad you got that. But did you find his voice optimistic? You did. He would end a sentence going up occasionally, especially if it was somebody he liked. Labor. The corporations are getting, they're, labor will be paid.
The cadence.
The cadence. What about the cadence?
That he's repeating it and he's speaking in a certain cadence throughout.
Exactly. And what you learn in your history books is that FDR spoke to the American people just like it was a dialogue. It was this personal intimacy that fit the American democracy so much better than Adolf Hitler's shrieking, right? Which fit Germany, which was all upset at the time. That wasn't a person talking to another human. You wouldn't talk in that affected way to somebody standing right in front of you. You wouldn't take those pauses. You wouldn't modulate your voice. You wouldn't raise it here. It's extremely performative. And if you go to the FDR Library and you look at his scripts, it's all in there, in his hand, in pencil, under the things. He actually wrote in mispronunciations of words because it would capture your ear. If you heard a word that didn't sound right, you would listen harder. Unbelievable brilliance in using the radio. Like I say, nothing like it, any president since, but dangerous. Now, the most important radio address in American history was the bank run in 1933. And I found a CBS promotional material in an archive that was fascinating with a sentence that cracked me up. "No one thing could have flung radio further forward in the minds of men who must win public faith in a name, an idea, or a product than that use of the microphone to sell America sanity." Literally, had Roosevelt not calmed the nation, and it was a 12-minute address on March 14th, 1933, the entire banking system would have collapsed. This isn't like conjecture. This actually happened. There's nothing, there's no equivalent in American history to this. There truly isn't. And what I want to point out is this was frightening to a lot of Americans. It was a brand-new medium. He obviously could do things that nobody else could do, his opponents couldn't do. And Roosevelt had this performance, but he also disciplined the networks in a way, behind the scenes, in ways that people didn't know. Here are two people whose names you probably, I'm guessing, most people in the room have never heard of. Bo Carter was a very popular radio commentator in the late 1930s. And James Rowland Angel was the president of Yale University, a psychologist who invented something called functionalism and NBC's radio entertainment director. And Roosevelt did not like them. And one of the things that cracks me up is, we'll start with Angel. Angel's, Angel's psychology is functionalism, which is how the human psychology interacts with its environment, right? Which is perfect for studying radio. And he would go and make these radio addresses. He was a Republican, he did speak at the Republican convention, but he would never say Roosevelt's name. He would say, the American people are looking for a dictator who might tell them what to do on the radio. And this was extremely upsetting, especially during the election in 1936 because the newspapers ran two-thirds to one-third against Roosevelt. The newspapers were telling people, vote for Alf Landon. So Roosevelt was using radio to reach past them. It's called disintermediation. So after the election, David Sarnoff, the chairman of NBC, hires Angel, retires as president. president of Yale, and hires him to direct radio. This is a memo I found in the FDR archives. It's July 3rd, 1937. Mac is Marvin McIntyre, and it's from Paul Watson, Roosevelt's secretary, but these are Roosevelt's words. Says, tell Sarnoff that this was a very, very dumb thing to do. Appoint Angel of Yale Director of Radio Education. Now imagine today, the President of the United States writing a memo to a network broadcaster and saying, you hired my, that was a very, very dumb thing to do. Angel disappears. He disappears from the airwaves. He completely disappears. The other one is Boe Carter. Boe Carter was a very popular newsman. He had a seven o'clock, 7:30 newscast. He spoke to millions of Americans. There's many reasons you haven't heard of Boe Carter. One was he liked Hitler. He, he supported Hitler's rejuvenation of the New Germany. He, uh, he also Japan and other things. And, um, he did not like the New Deal. He was warning during his newscasts, um, actually, there's a very funny article, you can read it, before Rush Limbaugh, there was Boe Carter. He was warning Americans of the new, of media and totalitarianism. And in 1982, a historian named David Colbert published, he found a series of memos in the FDR library where FDR's press secretary, Stephen Early, and Marvin McIntyre's advisor, were writing to all of Carter's sponsors, not writing to CBS, to the sponsors, and saying, we do not want his commentary on the American airwaves. Do not pay him anymore. And he got four contracts canceled, General Foods and the others and everything. And this happened in early 37, and by 38, he's off the air. Okay. So I raised this not to say, what has been lost in history about the new media question? And one of the things that has been lost is there have been warnings and there have been people who've said this kind of thing. And in the history, if we're okay with what the president did, we generally will look benevolently on how the new media was integrated, right? But there's another question involving Roosevelt, which is, in 1951, we passed the 22nd Amendment. No president can be elected more than twice. And I think that's a tacit acknowledgement of what had happened. How did a president get elected four times? How did Republicans and Democrats in the late 1940s and early 1950s, when this was being debated in the legislature, think about how a president got elected four times? And the, a major, major way was radio, was this new medium. And so the guardrail became a constitutional amendment that no matter how good somebody is in convincing America as a populist, we can't let them be constantly reelected. If, you know, you could see somebody as good as Roosevelt, you can imagine somebody as good as Roosevelt convincing Americans to keep them in the White House forever. And people in the late 1940s and early 1950s could imagine that. And that's why we have the 22nd Amendment. Okay. I'm going to be real quick here. Television and the evolution of presidential politics. I'm going to skip over the I like Ike cartoon acts when television came in and the idea of dumbing down. It was dumbing down our politics. Jump ahead to the presidential debates. Okay? The one, the way, in terms of warping democracy and new media, these are not debates. Okay? When they were being decided, they were not called debates. Even today, the candidates are not allowed to question each other or talk to each other. They stand at podiums and they only interact with the person at the panel. That is the rule. The Republicans and Democrats agreed with that. And when they actually created the debates, their title was the Joint Appearance Series, and the two parties said they can hold a joint press conference. It cannot be, so in other words, the press can ask them the same question, but they can't ask each other. Okay? And then they ended up as quiz shows. Why? Because in 1958, 1959, there was a quiz show scandal, there was a moral panic about what TV is doing. It's warping our brains, it's fooling us, it's faking us out. So they had, the networks had the stages, the networks had the formats, the networks had everything. And when the Republicans and Democrats were negotiating with the networks to do it, they kept trying to protect the candidates more and more. And so somebody came up with the idea, it came from the politicians on networks, put a time limit on every question. There has to be a time limit. Well, where does the time limit come from? It comes from the buzzer going off on quiz shows. These are quiz shows. They are not intellectual challenges. They are completely, I mean, and anyway, the way the format ended up with the presidential debates is that they ended up not being nearly as influential as they could have been. They are not a test of intellect, they are not a rational exchange, they are not a dialogue that moves us forward. They are a quiz show. And you're good at quiz shows or you're bad at quiz shows. And somebody wins and somebody loses, and somebody else keeps score, right? It's a, it's, it's, it's a way we don't think about it, but we should. All right, 1968, Chicago, the whole world's watching. Now, the way that warped democracy slightly in the election in 1968 was that, um, the protesters at the Chicago Convention were beaten on television by the policemen. And what shocked the networks and what shocked FCC and everybody was that the letters ran 11 to one in favor of the policemen. People wrote in saying that the protesters got what they deserved. They were beating up the police. This was shocking because the video was very, very clear. The film was very, very clear. This was shocking to FCC, I'm saying again, the television networks. And what it showed though, was that the televisual is not as dominant as people think. We define in our brains first and then we watch TV. We see what on TV, what we've already decided to see on TV. This was a shocking discovery. We thought people actually watched TV and changed their minds or thought about how the information was processed. It doesn't work like that. And that's how Richard Nixon and his 1968 campaign settled the framing and did a brilliant job in that. And the third is, it comes out of the cable news revolution. It was called the Brooks Brothers Riot. I don't know how many of you remember this. It was November 2000, and a group organized by the Republican National Committee Media 's arm broke into a counting room in the Miami precinct to stop it. And it was entirely performative. It was a demonstrative act that was designed for cable television. It was designed for Fox News, it was designed to appeal to a certain people in a certain way and tell a certain narrative that would reconfirm. It was not designed to persuade anybody. If you were a Democrat watching the Brooks Brothers Riot, you wanted the votes to be counted. You wanted democracy to proceed in a certain way. It was the other way around. It was to confirm the bias, okay? And what's interesting about the Brooks Brothers Riot, several of the people who organized it organized January 6th. Same kind of idea behind it. The televisuals, the way it works, um, it's very smart, it's very savvy, and, but it shows one way that television has warped our politics in that way. All right. And the last one is the World Wide Web. All right. In January 17th, 1998, Matt Drudge breaks the story of the president having a relationship with an intern, because Newsweek won't publish it, none of the journalists will publish it. This is the first big story that warps presidential politics from the web, and it's the end of professional gatekeeping in that sense. And then it keeps happening more and more, this democratization of information. And you could say the democratization, Memo Gate was when Dan Rather published memos that were not authenticated about George W. Bush. It happened in September 2004, and it clearly influenced the, uh, 2004 election. And in both cases, these are people who aren't professional journalists. Memo Gate was found by a lawyer on the web who compared fonts on a document. And so, um, the democratization of information that Lawrence Grossman said was going to be so great from the World Wide Web, it turns out to be more of a free for all. It turns out to be kind of the end of the rational, critical, dialogical exchange that used to be available, you know, in a, in a different format, in a different world. And it's kind of, no, we all define first and we reach out for what we want, uh, world that the web gives us, the web 1.0. And social media has just amplified that, this process to such an extent that if you ever see something on the web or social media and you wonder, this isn't convincing at all, this isn't persuasive at all. The reason is, it's not meant to be. Everything now is confirmation bias. Get out the vote. Everything now is about getting your side motivated, not persuading or convincing the other side. That's kind of a different political world that didn't exist, uh, in the earlier era. And there's my very quick tour. Sorry, a little longer than I thought. All right. So questions, thoughts? I'm, I'm very curious for feedback.
Mike, um, I'll, I'll speak louder. Uh, Mike, what I wanted to follow up on was, uh, your slip of introducing the word cynical into the process, which I think was a, um, an honest slip. It seems today that the issues you summarize with, with media essentially trying to hang on to their viewers, subscribers, by telling them what they want to hear, on both sides of the issue, has created, or seems to me, I've become very cynical about the media on either side, and for that matter, for the web. Is there an answer? Where will this go, do you think?
Here's, here's an interesting story that I, I can tell now because I've published about it, but at the time, it was secret. So for those of you who don't know, The New York Times got rid of the op ed page. It doesn't exist anymore. There's no such thing called the op ed page. It's guest essays. And I have actually published research and scholarship on how the op ed page came into being. And what, what, I'm just, the reason I'm jumping in here is because what you're describing, the cynicism, there used to be this kind of rational, critical exposure to other viewpoints and exchange. And the op ed page was great for that. It's why I loved it, it's why I researched it and did everything. Well, in 2021, The New York Times ended the op ed page. And the op, I happen to know the op ed editor of The New York Times, and they called me during the negotiation process, and they said, hey, we're going to use your scholarship to discuss the ongoing future of how this works, everything. Would you consult with us? Would you answer some questions and, and discuss with us? And so as part of that process, I ended it. I was not in favor of ending, but I'm, I'm, you know, who, I'm up in Oregon now, they're, they're the ones who made the decision. But that decision and the way they justified it was that the, the forum for rational, critical discourse and exchange is too warped in today's world. In other words, we call each other names, it's too emotional, we can't have persuasive dialogue with an intention of learning from each other. And so they said they didn't want to participate in it in the way that it had been previously constructed. They wanted to curate what The New York Times readers, uh, could take through guest essays. And so, I mean, it, it's astonishing. If you go through the history of the op ed, um, they published Red Hampton, the Black Panthers' Call for Armed Rebellion in the United States in 1971. They published a defense of Paul Pott in 1977. They published Vladimir Putin on the Syria massacres in 20, as recently as 2012. And here we are in 2024, and we've got wars going on around the world, and The New York Times is saying, we can't expose the American people. It's too dangerous right now to have that kind of access to information, uh, because we can't trust the audience in the same kind of way. And it's all over. They end up crossfire on CNN. Remember, 60 Minutes used to have a piece at the end where Shane Alexander would debate Point Caveman. We used to, we used to expect it as part of our media diet to be exposed to people we disagreed with. But you know, the problem with that is, there isn't enough money. New York Times subscribers do not want to be reading something that completely disavows their worldview. Even if it's intelligent, even if it's fact based, even if it's fully supported, you know, even if it's completely persuasive. And we've seen this many times. It's not just The New York Times, by the way. Fox News doesn't want people to be exposed. I mean, Fox News paid $787 million in a settlement to not upset their viewers about the truth about the election of 2020. Think about that, that it was worth that much money to not tell them the truth. Yep?
Mark, um, your views on the fairness doctrine, I know that's a big subject and a lot of people, not a lot of people would know about that. But what about the cleaning out eventually of the FCC as well? Seems to me that the Biden administration has pretty much tried to do, you know, destroy just about everything within the Constitution as it was. A lot of people don't like that phrase, but anyway, uh, what's your feeling on that?
Okay, there's two things. The first thing I want to talk, I want to mention is your take on the Biden administration and the Constitution. And there is a Supreme Court case I'm going to pull up right now, Murthy v. Missouri. How many people know this case that was argued in March, just this March? Anybody know Murthy v. Missouri? Okay, for those of you who don't know, during the COVID pandemic, the Biden administration, and though, actually, one of the things that complicates Murthy versus Missouri is that the Trump administration did it in 2020, but the Biden administration did it more in 2021, 2022. So it's bipartisan in this way. They sent the same kind of things that FDR did in 1938 to NBC, to the social media companies. They said, using their regulatory power, this is, okay, this is the allegation, and this is why it's in the Supreme Court. It's very complicated, I'm going to, one sentence. Both Biden and Trump are against Section 230. Section 230 immunizes the platforms from third party user content. So what both Biden and Trump did, but Biden did it more than Trump, let's be clear. Biden definitely did it more than Trump, there's more evidence, because the pandemic before we had the vaccine, if you remember, you know, it was worse, the pandemic was worse under Biden. I mean, we didn't have a way out of it when he was inaugurated. So they both, but in Biden's case, they went to the social media companies and they told them to algorithmically hide essentially COVID vaccine information, um, well, it's all right here. They, they, the things, things about election denial, mask and vaccine efficiency, and election denial. Now, this has been proven, we, they have the emails. It's all out in the court case, that the administration said, if you don't do this, we're going to change Section 230. We're going to modify, we're going to get rid of the misinformation if we have to by changing the rules of the internet. And so this lawsuit was brought by the state of Missouri, and it's been joined by many, two other states, Louisiana and, uh, Louisiana and Missouri, that the, the free speech rights of their citizens were encroached on by the White House during the COVID pandemic in this way. And we'll see. It was argued in March, and we'll see. So that's the, the second part of your question there about the Biden, the use of the, the first part about the FCC, the FCC going way back is, has been transparently political. We can't, let's not pretend otherwise. Sorry, do we have an FCC lawyer? Like the, uh, the, uh, the one thing I'll say though about the fairness doctrine, um, people think the fairness doctrine meant there weren't politics, and it was, there were two things, the fairness doctrine and the equal time rules, okay? Think that they removed politics. Luckily, I look out at the audience, I know there's people here who can remember radio in the 1970s, radio in the 80s before. There were guys like Bob Grant on WABC, Joe Pine, do these names ring a bell to anybody? Joe Pine in California, um, there were plenty. H.L. Hunt was on the radio. There was plenty of politics on the American airwaves, even in the era of the fairness doctrine and the equal time rules. So it's, it's been kind of forgotten. The way they dressed it up and got around it is they said, well, being patriotic is what Bob Grant did, it's not political. It's not partisan. You can't say Republicans and Democrats can both be patriotic, so let's have a patriotic radio show. So that's, the fairness doctrine is, is complicated by the fact that it didn't do what a lot of people thought it did. And, and, and so I'm, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a little complicated. I don't think, I think a lot of people call for the return of the fairness doctrine without knowing what it was or how it actually worked, which is sort of one of the problems.
Michael, you alluded to this in talking about, um, the fireside chats. Talking about the fireside chats and how it was very performative. And I had been listening to a podcast by Eric Liu, who heads Project Citizen, and that was the point he was making, is that media is very performative. What's the ratio of performative to informative? And does it, and does it fluctuate?
That's a, the, um, I'm going to flip that around, I'm going to have to flip that around. And I'm going to say, because I could give you all the theories, the McLuhan, I could give you all the, you know, the media ecology, there's an entire field of study of that question in that way. But, um, the other guy's radio is performative, my guy's radio is informative. That's, that's essentially, it's a third.
So it's a zero sum game.
Exactly. And that's, that's the problem, is we have to question our own, the biggest single issue right now is that we don't question our own sources of information. Because we're not, and I don't blame people for this. I'm guilty too. Okay? I don't blame people for this, but we are being channeled in ways that are unimaginable 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago. And when I say in ways that are unimaginable, you could argue that the CBS Evening News with Walter Cronkite was completely biased. And you could, you could argue that, you could say, hey, it was too liberal. They did all this Vietnam stuff that caused all these problems for America or whatever. And that's perfectly fine, and people did argue that back then. But you, but the product itself was seen by people from different political perspectives to have that kind of conversation. The difference today, and remember, the takeaway is, don't panic. The difference today is we're not being told we're not exposed algorithmically to the information that we need. Are you following that kind of? Like, if you tuned in something to be informed in 1978, radio or TV, in a certain way, you could have, you could still have the same criticism there, but, and you could say, this TV show is missing something, because I know, because I read it in my newspaper or I read it in my magazine or whatever. But today, our media diets are so catered to us, down to micro-targeting, which reminds me of, of the thing that John said that was interesting to me about the micro-AI thing, getting down to the absolute person, to the tailored personalization. For those of you who don't know, the number one change between 2020 and 2024 in the largest advertising expenditure for the campaigns, and I say change, it's not the number one expenditure, number one expenditure is still local TV. So the biggest change in percentage is going to something called micro-influencers. It turns out that they used to say, oh, Kim Kardashian, she has a million followers. Let's get her to endorse this product. No, there's more credibility if you have under 10,000 followers. If you have somewhere between five and 10,000 followers, the, what you say, because it doesn't appear, you're not a celebrity. It doesn't appear to be paid for in an ad. What you say has more credibility with your audience. So the Democrats and the Republican Parties right now, that's the biggest change, more money going into what's called micro-tailored influencers on social media. Nobody knows this. We see our friend who has 6,000 likes and doesn't have to report to the FEC, that they really love Robert F. Kennedy and his brain worm, right? You know? And, and it's not reported as an ad. It's not, and if that person had 1.1 million and they liked Robert F. Kennedy and the brain worm, we'd all be skeptical, because we know somebody with a million followers is not, maybe not somebody to trust. Somebody with 8,000 followers on Instagram or TikTok is trustworthy. And that's what I mean when I say it's really, it's almost frightening how incredibly we're being siloed into an incredibly tailored media message in this day.
I'm curious your thoughts about social media and media and polarization, and if we are truly more polarized now than in, in, you know, other points in history, or if that's just our perception?
Great question. And I, as a historian, I have to say, it's just our perception. And, and of course, it was a lot worse. We, I mean, we've had rebellions. We've had, we've had the Whiskey Rebellion. We've had, we've had series of, and you could say, we've had fake news, we've had fake news wars. Not, I mean, you might say, oh, the weapons of mass destruction, 2004 Iraq, what a disaster. How could we have done that? Well, you know what? We took over Cuba and the Philippines in 1898 on a phony ship being blown up that was probably just a magazine accident. But a big newspaper company had been trying for years to get in business in Cuba and decided to tell the people, hey, you know what? It's such a funny story. It's a horrible story, but it's so funny when you think about it, because Spain wasn't going to attack us in 1898. They couldn't, they couldn't even hold their own colonies. It didn't make any rational sense that Spain would do that. But the media companies do that. So it's not new in that way, and, and the polarization in that way. But there is something, there is, yeah. Well, again, what I say is, what, what seems to be new is the idea that we're not aware of what we're not being exposed to. We don't, we don't seem to interact with neighbors who have a different political persuasion in the same kind of way we did. And that's more anecdotal from, from my thing. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm in my 50s, and so growing up 40 years ago, it did seem to me, and I'm looking at the audience, I'm wondering if it seemed to you, that there was more exchange. There was really more exchange between, between all different political perspectives. And that's how you help with polarization.
But there was more exchange because you could talk to someone and get a rational response. Of course, today, it seems to me, oh, today, it seems to me as though you, you can't talk to your neighbors anymore and expect a rational response. And my question is, where do we go from here? How can you change that, besides the be kind signs on them?
Okay. The, the number one thing I would say is, think about your media diet. Read the stuff you disagree with that you think might be credible. That's on all of us. And we will be in the minority if we do that, but we will be helping society in that way. And hopefully, we can get enough people. The problem is, the money isn't there. The money is in confirmation bias. The money for The New York Times, Fox News, Newsmax, all the money is in a news organization telling you what you already know and believe.
Mike, what about things like pre-press and the new channels where you've got established journalists breaking away from Rolling Stone or The New York Times and going on their own?
Sure.
Is there any more credibility there, in your opinion, or is it still just talking to the converted?
And, and what you're mentioning here is like, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Substack, right? And Substack is this new alternative media company that allows people to build their own platforms, and they make a lot of money. People like Iglesias, people like Andrew Sullivan make millions of dollars. One of, Heather Cox Richardson's letter from America is the number one Substack. It's based, somebody here in Maine who does this story. These people make millions of dollars a year. But when I read Substacks, I've just got to be honest, the framing is predictable. The, the authors, I don't think there is somebody who can really be contrarian in today's day and age, because they'll upset their audience. Christopher Hitchens got fired. I don't know how many of you remember an essayist named Christopher Hitchens, or Alexander Coburn, or I'm trying to think of who are, who are these type of figures that used to be in the public domain in arguments? They got fired left and right for saying things that upset their bosses. But they had a big enough audience who would listen to them that they weren't as easily predictable. And I, can anybody think of a, I can't really think of a figure like that today, who is not afraid to upset a media figure, that is not afraid to upset their audience and has a big enough following to...
What about Joe Rogan?
Rogan is interesting. Rogan is interesting. And I've, I've studied some of, of the Rogan stuff. And what Rogan, Rogan is predictable, he does have a format, but he, he is, I mean, supported Bernie Sanders. Supported Bernie Sanders in 2000. This right-wing podcaster.
We're not all perfect.
Huh?
We're not all perfect.
We're not all perfect. Well, the point, the point is, so I think Joe Rogan is the best example. But I think it's a different example because he, he, he allows points of views. He's a questioner who listens. That's another thing that's not there in the audience. That's a good example.
How about Roald Dahl?
Who?
Is it Roald Dahl? D-A-H-L?
Roald Dahl is the children's author?
No.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I think you've got the wrong answer.
No, 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 but are you thinking of somebody with a name like that? Who? I'm trying to think.
Roald Dahl's an author.
Yeah, yeah.
Willy Wonka.
Right, right. But no, I think there is a journalist with a name just like that I'm trying to think of.
He's being kind.
All right. No, no, no. All right.
What about Megyn Kelly?
Who said Megyn Kelly? Megyn Kelly, Megyn Kelly. For those of you who don't know, Megyn Kelly has a podcast that's listened to by millions of people every day, and she is still very influential. But she got, she got $20 million to go from Fox News to NBC and then self-destructed at NBC, because at NBC, you're not speaking to people who want confirmation bias, right? How many people, do you know that there's one American newsman in the United States of America right now who speaks to the largest daily audience? Okay? Speaks to nine million Americans a night. To give you an idea, his daily newscast is watched by more than CNN, MSNBC, and Fox News combined. What's his name? Nope, nope. What's his, what, sorry, you can go ahead.
Ben Shapiro.
It's not Ben Shapiro, and it's not Joe Rogan, who, but, because they're not daily. Well, Ben Shapiro has that daily update podcasting.
Is that one of the late-night hosts?
It's not one of the late-night hosts. His audience is probably four times larger than the late-night host. Who is the person who has an audience of nine million Americans daily? Do you have, do you have, no, it's not Tucker Carlson. Daily. Rush Limbaugh sadly passed away two years ago. Think of, okay, I want to tell you, think of how astonishing it is. The, we're a nation of 330 million. We have somebody who speaks to about 10 million, the largest audience in the United States every night with a news show. Nobody in this room can name him. His name is David Muir, and his show is called ABC World News Tonight. The fact, the fact that we assume Fox News has this tremendous power, CNN has this incredible power, fake news, cable news, all this stuff, and yet our fellow Americans, their number one source of news is a man named David Muir, who, who's a very ethical and professional journalist. You should tune in his show. It's very good. And I'm not just saying that because my dad was a producer of a news show. But the fact that we're sitting here, we're talking about Substack, and we're talking about Joe Rogan, and we're talking about this and that, when, when the biggest audience of American information is somebody we're not naming tells you something about us, for starters. But it also tells you something about how the information, it's also one of the things that gives me, that gives me some sense of protection for the information environment we live in.
Is he on the evening news?
Yep.
The regular evening news?
The regular evening news. ABC World, he's the Peter Jennings of today's world.
Okay.
Yeah.
One last question?
Hi. How do you suggest that regular people learn more about digital literacy and understand what's credible when they're reading their news?
Ah, the, the second part, first, what's credible when you read your news? Look for the fact basis, look for the links, look for all kinds of things. I wrote a piece for The New York Times called "How to Stop Smart People from Spreading Stupid Ideas" or something. I forgot what the title. And that was the number one thing. Look for the links, look for the supporting evidence, whether, even if you disagree with it. So it, be open to persuasion.